Give our prayer and Brother Jim Fibas, if he'll stay and give our pledge.
Father God, you are good and great and compassionate towards all. We see that model of compassion in life and death of your son, Jesus Christ. And we praise you for that compassion example. I pray today that as the city conducts its business, that it does so with justice and compassion in its heart. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Brother Jim? Please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I call this meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Okay, Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Almost. Councilor Mundy.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here. I'm tired here.
Councilor Robinson.
Present.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Poye.
Here.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Yeah.
And Councilor McLendon.
Present.
A full house.
Coram present, we will proceed with the meeting. The first item under the agenda would have been bid openings and we have done. So moving on, the next item would be the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
Motion second to approve is presented. All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved. Next item is under items that are brought forward under old business. It will be the third reading on following the electrical code. Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance for the adoption of the National Electrical Code 2017 edition, providing penalties for violations of such regulation and for other purposes.
That concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion and a second to approve? So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could I get a little information on about the penalties that the electrical code is offering?
It's what we're doing, we're following the state's electrical code.
Okay. Is it with tampering with the meters or anything?
Ain't got nothing to do with that. Any other questions? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Would you give that ordinance a number?
It'll be ordinance number 2454.
Next item brought forward under old business was the second reading on an ordinance on repair to parks. Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 2453, the cost of playground equipment and playground improvements for Matthews Park, Hicks Park, and Worthington Park and for other purposes.
That concludes the second reading on it. Should we suspend the rules and go ahead?
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second it.
Motion and second to suspend the rule places on its third and final reading. All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, would you read it for the third and the final time?
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 2453, the cost of playground equipment and playground improvements for Matthews Park, Hicks Park, and Worthington Park and for other purposes.
That concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion and a second to approve? So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Would you give that ordinance a number?
That'll be ordinance number 2455.
Thank you. Moving on, the other items brought forward from old business is the resolution R2. Could I have, I believe, a decision made to table this indefinitely?
Make a motion, we table R2 indefinitely.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is tabled indefinitely. Next item is brought forward, the second reading of an ordinance allowing the airport to do business with Commissioner Mel Bearden. Would you read it for the second time?
An ordinance authorizing the city of West Memphis and the West Memphis Municipal Airport Commission to conduct business with Commissioner Mel Bearden and for other purposes.
Concludes the second reading. Could we suspend the rules and place it on its third?
I'd like to make that motion.
A motion and second to place it on its third and final reading. All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, would you read it for the third and the final time?
An ordinance authorizing the city of West Memphis and the West Memphis Municipal Airport Commission to conduct business with Commissioner Mel Bearden and for other purposes.
That concludes the third and the final reading. Could I have a motion and a second to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Would you give that ordinance a number?
It'll be ordinance number 2456.
Moving on, we have the second reading that does has to do with automobile repairs. Would you read the title to it, Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance to regulate vehicle and equipment repair on residential premises in the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
I believe we decided we'd leave it at second and read it the third time next meeting. Or do you want to read it out?
I make a motion, we read it for its third and final time.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Would you please explain to the public what this ordinance is all about because I think it's going to have a great impact on a lot of the people living here in our city.
Who wants to handle that? What?
Let's let Mike.
Okay. My understanding is that the police department and Public Works met numerous times and determined that one of the things they wanted to do was stop residential vehicle repair for business, basically. So if there is someone who is mainly or really operating a business in a residential area by repairing vehicles, this regulates that, provides for penalties, and also provides for when and under what circumstances you can work on cars that you're not for a business.
You're talking about specifically on their private property, is that correct?
Yeah, on residential property.
Also, how do they determine if someone is working on their own personal vehicles compared to doing business?
They would stop and make that question. They would ask that question.
Okay.
Well, it's my understanding what they're going to try to do is warn people prior to issuing any citations. It's not the intent to have people have to come to court and pay fines and costs. It's the intent to stop the practice. And the fines and costs are made high enough where, you know, if they were so low, people would just pay the fine and cost and continue to operate. So we're trying to make it a deterrent.
Any other question? We have a motion and a second to read it for the third and the final time.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I do just want to get a clarification because I understand, but it wasn't clarified to me. How do we determine your personal vehicles compared to doing other work? And I know they're going to pop, this is going to pop up because I know individuals right now have four cars and work on cars. So how do we determine that this is your own personal vehicles or you doing a?
Through the title or the VIN number or the license plate.
So they cannot work on a sister or brother car, a mother car, nothing like that?
As long as it's just one car at a time, I think is how the ordinance reads. They can only work on one car at any particular time, whether it's family member or friend. They can, you know, for example, if my car is broken down or something of that nature and I want my brother to work on my car, just that one on my property, I'm thinking he can change my oil or something like?
That's understandable for me. I just wanted to have a clarification because I know there's eventually going to pop up.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion?
I think that in the ordinance, it says that they have, if they're working on a car, they have to have it under a covered area, like a garage in the backyard or something like that. There's a lot of different information in that ordinance which concerns the working on the vehicles. If you take a minute to scan through it, you could pick up on some of it, some of it has to be explained to you, so, and me too, so.
In other words, we can't have motors hanging from trees and things like that.
I understand, I understand all of that, I do. I would just want a clear clarification. It's not for my benefit, it's for the people.
Well, I'm calling for the vote and I guess y'all can get with the city attorney. That way you can get your clarification, you know, we don't have to, you know, because that's the only way you're going to be able to do it. We're not going to get it here, so I'm calling for the vote.
Motion and second to proceed. All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Do you want to assign that one a number?
I think we need for the third. I think we can read it for the third time now.
That cleared the third reading, the final reading.
We only read it twice, right?
Correct. Yeah, we need to read it one more time.
We read it for the third time. That approved it for the third.
Would you read the title of Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance to regulate vehicle and equipment repair on residential premises in the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
That concludes the third reading of this ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? So move.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passed. Would you give that ordinance a number?
Now, ordinance are 2457.
All right, moving on, the other item is the second reading on one that had to do with yard sales.
An ordinance to regulate yard sales and garage sales within the corporate limits of West Memphis, Arkansas.
That concludes the second reading. Could I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place it on the third reading? Have a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
Have a second?
Yes, sir.
Any additional discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's, now read it for the third and the final time.
An ordinance to regulate yard sales and garage sales within the corporate limits of West Memphis, Arkansas.
You've heard it read for the third and the final time. Could I have a motion and a second to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Would you give that ordinance a number?
It'll be ordinance number 2458.
You're going right down the line, aren't you?
Yes, sir. Kind of numerical.
That concludes items of old business that were brought forward. Now we move on into the new business. The first one is R1.
I'll ask Mr. Poye.
Well, I make a motion, read R1 through?
And 1 through 9.
09. But we're going to read R1. Actually, R1, read it out, a couple people, read it out. It's not that long.
We'll just hold up. We won't.
Everything else, read by title, only R1, some people want to read it out, so, you know.
Go ahead, read R1, Mr. City Attorney.
All right, in full, right?
Yeah.
A resolution approving an amendment to the 2018 budget for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas and for other purposes. Whereas ACA Section 14-58-203 allows the municipal governing body to alter or revise from time to time amount to an appropriation of funds which are lawfully applicable to the items therein contained. Whereas the Budget Committee of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas has met and has recommended that the 2018 budget for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas be amended for the purpose of changing the wages of the senior deputy clerk from an 18 pay grade to a 20 pay grade, data processing manager to 80,000 per year, West Memphis utility manager to 110,000 per year, secretary to the mayor and the city attorney to be increased to pay grade 22, code enforcement clerk to pay grade 15, a building inspector to pay grade 22, a part-time HR assistant to pay grade 16, municipal district court. While eliminating one position, deputy clerks to a 14 and chief deputy clerks to a pay grade 16, including a 5% increase to the chief clerk, non-exempt employees in the street and sanitation departments would be increased by one pay grade and exempt employees would be increased by 5%. Whereas the cost of the change in these allocations is estimated at $135,000. Whereas the city council of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas finds that the recommended budget amendment for the purpose of funding this allocation is appropriate and should be approved. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, that the 2018 budget for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas is hereby estimated to be amended in the amount of $135,000 as set out in Exhibit A, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
That concludes the reading of R1.
Yes, sir.
Could I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Would you give that resolution a number?
It'll be resolution number 2164.
Now, Mr. Poye, would you take care of ordinance 01 through 09?
Make a motion, read 01 through 09 by title only.
Second.
All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. City Attorney, we'll start with 01. Would you read the title to 01?
Yes, sir. An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
That concludes the first reading. It'll be back on our next regular scheduled meeting. Would you read the title to 02?
Yes, sir.
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for economic development services, approving a contract between the city of West Memphis and the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 03?
An ordinance to amend Section 2.51.030 of the West Memphis Municipal Code, establishing the salary for the position of city attorney and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 04?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding on professional accounting services and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 05?
Yes, sir.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the professional consulting services in regulatory and other matters to be approved by A.J. Rowe and Associates, Inc., and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 06?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the professional consulting services in regulatory and other matters to be provided by David Wilson and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 07?
An ordinance to amend Article 6, Section 1E2 of the pavement requirements in the zoning ordinance for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 08?
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding for the purchase of motor fuel and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 09?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 500 West Broadway, Suite 1, permitting a U-Haul rental facility in a C-1 general commercial district.
That concludes items brought forward. There will be some discussion and potential changes on some of these, so they'll be back on our regular scheduled meeting for the second reading. Moving on, I need permission request, I believe, next thing on here.
Yes, sir.
Need permission to sign a document or memorandum of understanding. We discussed it at length and pre-council.
So move.
Second.
Have motion and second to authorize me to sign this MOU. Any discussion?
Maybe we should have Mr. Sorrell kind of give a brief discussion just for the public so they know why we're making this.
Sure, is Philip out there?
Yes, he's there.
He's on the back row. You thought you were hid.
I did.
You can run, but you can't hide, right?
That right.
Basically, this permission request is to sign memorandum of understanding with Entergy to allow them to provide service, electrical service, in a remote and western part of the city bordered by Highway 147 out near Lehigh. The reason for this is we want to partner with Entergy to, number one, they'll certify the site for us, they'll help us market the site as a, what we refer to as a mega-site, a large industrial tract, which there are very few of those large tracts in the state. So it's a valued asset to have within this community, to have a certified site, which essentially means shovel-ready site when you have a prospect looking at locating within your area. So it greatly increases our chances for success in marketing the site, and this matter's already been before the Utility Commission. They're comfortable with it and they approved it. And so we feel like there's only upside for us and really no downside. So be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
If I may, the state also was asking the city to pursue this site correctly?
They're supportive of this, yes. That is correct.
Any additional question? We need to vote on this for me to sign it. We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes, sir.
Any additional discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I will sign it. Next item on the agenda would be a recommendation of the Planning Commission. Can I have a motion and a second to approve their recommendation?
So move.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you accept it. Under committee reports, Lorraine, I'll refer to you on, did you have somebody?
My air here?
Oh, announcements.
Oh, announcements? You want the announcements now?
Do what?
You need the committee reports first.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
I'll go ahead and do. Ms. Shirley Higgins is here with an announcement that she'd like to make concerning the museum that she's erecting at the Academies of West Memphis, Dymnation.
To the Honorable Mayor Johnson, city council members, I am Shirley Higgins, a former retired educator of the West Memphis school system. Good afternoon. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be a part of the agenda for today. Now, my purpose here today is not to be long, but to be informative. I want you to be informed about what's going to take place in this great city of West Memphis. So at this time, may I bring my son, Keith Higgins, and he will begin to enlighten you about what's going to happen.
To Mayor Johnson and to the council as a whole, on April the 4th, 2018, will be 50 years since Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated in Memphis, Tennessee. All over the United States, they are doing a MLK 50 commemoration of Dr. King. And so what we decided to do is to bring some education and some notoriety to this commemoration right here in West Memphis. So along with the Academy of West Memphis, we are going to do an exhibit hall in the Old Boys' Gym of showing all throughout the civil rights movement. I have spoken to some people in West Memphis, and what we are going to do, we're going to have an area even showing where West Memphis was in 1968 all the way up until 2018. We have several different businesses going to perform a display, set up a display. We have invited the local schools to come and see the display. It's absolutely free. We're in discussion with Earl High School as well as Forest City School District to invite them up to have field trips, to bring, to educate our young as well as our not-so-young. And so this is what we're doing. We're doing it through the 4th of April through the 8th of April, and we are going to have 50 displays, 50 displays showing knowing our past empowers our future. And so that's what we're doing, Mayor and council. That's what we're doing.
Where is it located? Where is it going to be again?
It's going to be at the Old Boys' Gym at the Academy of West Memphis.
Okay.
And if you would like to present and do a display, we would welcome you as city councilman and mayor of West Memphis.
Who will we contact, Ms. Higgins, if we wanted to do a display?
Here I am, Shirley Higgins.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And she do have forms if, we've had great response from the local churches, sororities, fraternities, different businesses are going to participate. And again, it's throughout the civil rights movement. A lot of people don't even know that the first woman that helped form the NAACP was not an African-American woman. So we want to get information out there about this. We did something similar to this in Oakland, California, when I was in the school district there. So we are excited about this opportunity to bring this to our community. They are doing things in Little Rock, they are doing things in Pine Bluff, and they're all doing things in Memphis, Tennessee. But between Little Rock and back here, there's not being very much done. So we're, we want to educate as well as bring this acknowledgement.
Shirley, you brought your son. Are you going to bring your grandson?
Of course, I'll have De'Aries here.
You're going to have De'Aries here?
Yes.
Everybody remembers De'Aries.
Yes, sir. We thank you all.
Do you have questions?
What grade did you teach this?
What grade did I teach? I taught 7th and 9th.
Now, who was in your class?
Mr. Poye.
What kind of grades did you make?
Don't say it. You're going to say it.
Okay. I'll take the 5th.
I bet you they call you Mr. Poye then, either.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you both. Ms. Higgins, Shirley, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you too. Thank you.
Okay, we're going into our committee reports. I'll start down here to my left, I guess, Ramona?
I've got Public Works. The Public Works Committee approved the recommendation of a pay grade increase for street and sanitation. The January recycling was 13,900 with one e-waste pickup. The February recycling was 11,800 pounds with no e-waste. On the Hino Bridge construction, we're still waiting on concurrence from the Arkansas Department of Transportation on the low bidder. The South Loop contracts are signed and have been sent to the Arkansas Department of Transportation for their final improvement. We're getting bids on repair of the Redding Street Bridge in the attempt to increase its life another five to 10 years. The Lear Street Bridge is at RDOT. They're doing the design engineering. We're looking at the foundation repairs for the control building at the diversion pond. We're also exploring the possibility of purchasing carts for curbside pickup to make that change or make that recommendation to the chamber, I'm sorry, to the council. And then Captain Baker came and gave an update on inoperable vehicle sweep. To date, they have contacted 303 residences with 377 cars noted as being inoperable. If I might, I'd like to give an interim Advertising and Promotion Commission report. Wednesday, we wrapped up the Arkansas Governor's Conference in West Memphis. There were 450 attendees from all over the state and the region. Thank you for those of you who came and participated. I personally learned a lot. I want to recognize the State Commissioner for Parks and Tourism, Ness Seacrest. Our local resident was there and helped us get this. Recognize Southland Gaming and Racing. Their meeting rooms were phenomenal and the food was absolutely amazing. We had two local, we had two West Memphians on panels. Kentrell Curry graduated from the West Memphis High School in 2009. He currently works at Crystal Bridges. His background is art history, and he spoke on the U.S. Civil Rights Tourism Trail. Then Dr. Cliff Jones with the Mid-South, ASU Mid-South, spoke on a panel on music heritage. So West Memphis was very well represented as authorities in certain areas. And I must give recognition to Jim Jackson, our Executive Director of Convention and Visitors Bureau, who has been working on this for a couple of years. So thank you, Jim, for everything you've done to make this West Memphis looked really good. So thank you. That ends my report.
Okay. Tracy?
Yes, sir. Budget Matt, and the recommendations of the Budget Committee were taken care of by the city council today in R1. That will meet again with HR in either two to four weeks, depending on how she progresses with her next set of stats. Fire Commission met on March 13th. There were no dismissals, suspensions, promotions, or hirings. Assistant Chief and Chief Gailey went to the Trading Academy on March 2nd to attend the graduation of Landon Bullard. All the pumps will be tested over the next two to three weeks, and we did not receive an EMS report this month due to the individual being out of the office, but I'll update everybody soon as she gets back in.
Okay.
And that concludes both.
All right.
The Fire Commission met this morning. I was not in attendance, but I do have a brief report. It says the South Apron expansion will begin again on March 26th, weather permitting. It should take approximately three more weeks once they get started. And it was also approved that Malone and Son Farm acreage again around the airport this year. Can I do the police as well while I'm on it, please, sir? Councilman Monday had to leave, but he wanted me to announce that Police Chief Oaks would like to meet with all city council members, mayor, everyone. Next Wednesday at 12 o'clock, next Wednesday is the 21st. The police chief is going to have the demo cameras to show us how they're going to work. So he wants all of us to be available to kind of take a look at that, to see how they're going to be operating. That is.
Does that conclude the committee reports?
I've got, I've got the Utility Commission, Mayor. On the Utility Commission, we met last Thursday. On the Utility Commission, we met last Thursday, and Brett Samms reported that we had one injury and zero accidents. The result was the recordable, the injury was recordable, it was zero lost time for the month of February. There was a personnel update. We had four resignations in which four, all four were volunteer resignations. We added one new employee, and the Utility Commission currently has openings for eighteen positions. There were a couple of customers that came in to address the commission regarding a complaint about the sewer backup on the Holmes and South Roseland. General Manager Todd Peterson discussed the tree bidding bids, and of those tree bidding bids, he suggested and recommended that West Tree Service take, take the bid, they were the low bid at two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Recommendation by the city council was to Reese, I mean Philip, Phillips Sorrell just discussed this, we just went over this, memorandum of understanding in the, the previous meeting, so that was taken care of. And a letter from the ADEQ was received by the Utility Commission, and we have sixty days to respond to that letter, so I don't think that's going to be any issue. And the approval was made by the board, the commission, to retire the bond issue of the Utility Commission. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Are there any other reports? Any announcements?
I have one.
All right.
May twenty-fourth, I mean, just, I'd like to let the public know that we will be having a Memorial Day program for the veterans, May twenty-fourth at six P.M. The time now, I mean, the place now would be at the Civic Auditorium, Civic Center, and we're asking all the family members, if you had a family member to lose his life in combat, we'd like for you to get in touch with us. My number is nine zero one, four nine oh three, one eight six. I'm James Pulliam, Mr. Jim Fabas, he's also, you can find his number in the paper pretty much with the American Legion and the VFW as well. We're trying to put the program together now, so we are trying to get information from the family members, and if you have any information that you can present to us, you can give me a call, either Mr. Jim Fabas at the American Legion, or Evan Tate at the VFW, or you, Miss Anita Bell at Crylite. So we plan, you know, to do this May twenty-fourth, six o'clock P.M. at Civic Auditorium as it's standing now.
And Mayor, along that same line, the West Memphis Public Library is going to host the planting of the World War One Commemorative Tree for Cootinon County on Saturday, April the sixth, at ten A.M. We'd really like to have any family members of those who've served in World War One there. And then the plan is for it'll stay there until the new library's built, and then that'll be a centerpiece of the new library landscape, so I would encourage everyone to come out for that.
Anything else, any other announcements?
Make a motion, Mr. John.
Second.
All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?